All right. Good evening, everybody. Shall we convene the Committee of the Whole, Belvidere City Council Committee of the Whole, of November thirteenth, 2023? Bring that to order. And if the clerk will help me with the roll call, please.
Albertini.
Here.
Brereton.
Here.
Flurry.
Here.
Frank.
Here.
Freeman.
Here.
Gramkowski.
Here.
McGee.
Here.
Mahal. Mahal's absent. Porter. Porter's absent. Snow.
Here.
Eight present.
Okay, thank you. And do we have anybody registered for public comment?
We do not.
Okay. Thank you. As everybody is aware, the President of the United States visited Belvidere last Thursday. And anytime you get the President of the United States to come to your community, it's a big deal. And in this case, he came here in support of jobs for Stellantis and for our community. So for that, I'm very grateful. I do want to thank Chief Woody, Chief Shadle, Brent Anderson, Director Anderson. I want to thank you for the professionalism that we exhibited with public safety and with the organization that went along with that to make sure we had barricades in place. I know that not everybody's going to be happy about, especially around school time, with the traffic changes that we had. But there again, it's a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. I don't know when the last time President came to Belvidere. I'm thinking maybe when I was a junior in high school. I think maybe Gerald Ford might have had a whistle-stop tour here, I do believe. But other than that, I don't recall it, especially with anything regarding anything that we had so much interest in as a community, as jobs and investment. So I want to thank you all for that. I greatly appreciate it. And then also Saturday, we had a Veterans Day remembrance at the VFW. We had that at Saturday at nine forty-five at the park and then over at ten o'clock at the VFW. And at both of these events, I tried to make sure that we had ample notice with the President's visit. I tried to make sure that the aldermen all had an opportunity to attend. Whether or not we are supporters of the person that holds office, to me, is irrelevant. It's still something historic, and a lot of people would like to have an opportunity to attend. And it wasn't easy, but we made that happen. As well, the Veterans Day, I know everybody has busy weekends and what have you, but for those that attended both, I certainly am grateful. I appreciate it. We'll go to public forum. We don't have anything with a public forum. Is there, there is no other comment, correct? And reports of officers, boards, and special committees. When we get, before we get to item one, I know Finance Director Hanson had some information from us that I thought was good news. At least we're a little bit closer to perhaps revenue regarding our ambulance issue. So with that being said, Director Hanson.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm sorry she's not here to hear the, not here to hear this. We'll have to follow up with her. But as a follow-up to Alderwoman Mahal's question at the last committee of the whole meeting, we'd like to provide an update on the status of ambulance service billing revenue. To date, revenue is just under thirty-two thousand solely from commercial insurance carriers. We're pleased to share that the city has now received Medicare approval, and last week two-hundred-and-twenty-four claims were released, which should result in revenue of approximately two-hundred-and-eight thousand. Another eighty-three claims are expected to be released soon. And now that we've received Medicare approval, we anticipate Medicaid approval will follow shortly, at which time another hundred-and-eighty-two claims will be released. Medicare's pay cycle is typically fourteen days, which is great, and Medicaid generally does not pay as promptly, but we should certainly see that revenue start to climb.
Okay. Any questions regarding that for Ms. Hanson? Thank you for, I know that's a lot of work, and I know that's time-consuming, and it's time-relevant. I mean, there isn't any button you can push to make sure that that happens sooner, but at least, I guess, we're starting to crawl, and then we can walk and run after that. So, thank you for that. Moving on, actually, building, planning, zoning, and unfinished business? We have none. Item two, building, planning, zoning, new business. Building Department update. I know Kip is not with us here this evening, but Gina, did you have anything that you wanted to add here this evening?
Yep. So for the Building Department, in October, they issued a total of a hundred-and-eight building permits. And some notable activities was, one of those permits is Dunkin' Donuts. So they are finally permitted, and I'm not sure on their construction timeframe, though. Coonis' expansion got final, General Mills got a temporary CO. I know Kip and Craig met with several of the project managers for the large projects that are going on in town to get a schedule of inspections and reviews figured out. And that, those were the big ones.
Okay. I appreciate that, Gina. Any questions for Gina? I know I'd asked her to do a quick synopsis. I knew that Kip wasn't going to be here. I appreciate that, Gina. If not, move on to item B, Planning, Zoning Department, and put your other hat on tonight, Gina, for an update.
Yep. So cases are down for planning right now, which is pretty typical in the wintertime, which is good because the department is down our administrative assistant. So I've been pulling double duty, trying to help with the front. But did get some final inspections done, General Mills downtown, reviews are still going, there's still some facades and signage going up. We did release some of the downtown facade grant money. Zoning letters are still very active. Historic Preservation had their awards banquet in October. Those that win those awards, it really does help motivate them to do more projects and continue the upkeep of their buildings. And comp plan, obviously, there's lots of comp plan meetings going on. I'm very happy with the progress we're making and the discussions that they're having with stakeholders in the community. And I'll see staff participated in the downtown trick-or-treat. So that was it.
All righty. Thank you, Gina. Any questions for Gina regarding any of that or anything else? All right. We will move on to item two C. In your packets, you had a memo from me regarding the appointment of William J. Bieber to the Planning and Zoning Commission. You may or may not be aware of it, that Brad Anderson, longtime Belvidere resident, he moved out of the community, so he resigned his position. And I will read this memo in public. Commissioner Brad Anderson has resigned his position from the City of Belvidere Planning and Zoning Commission as he has relocated out of the area. I thank Commissioner Anderson for his service, and I offer the appointment of William J. Bieber to fill the remaining term of Commissioner Anderson's term expired, which expires April thirtieth of 2026. With that being said, I would ask for a motion, I request a motion to consent to the appointment of Mr. William J. Bieber to the City of Belvidere Planning and Zoning Commission for the remainder of the term of office expiring April thirtieth, 2026, as presented. Could I have a motion of that effect, please? Motion by Alderwoman Gramkowski, second by Alderman Albertini. And in your packet attached with that is a letter of interest from William. And so, motion on the floor has been made. Is there any discussion? Alderwoman Freeman?
Thank you, Mayor. So I just had a quick question. And it pertains to all these commissions and, you know, trustees and appointments that are made by the mayor. Do we advertise for those, or do we post those somewhere? Or how do people know that there's an opening? Is it, or is it just recommendations from the retiree to you, or do you just personally solicit people?
I don't know if this was posted, to tell you the truth. I don't know if we post these on our website. I don't know if this one was posted. No, I have a lot, you know, I get around this community a lot, and so I have an opportunity to meet a lot of different people. And as you're, as you're aware, a lot of times, these appointments are hard to get. They're hard to get people to spend time with them. In this case, I had met this gentleman once when I was at campaign for mayor. I had met him, and he expressed at that time a willingness to want to help the city, contribute in any way that he could. I didn't have anybody knocking down the door on any of these, I usually don't, that want to serve. And so, he had sent me a letter, and there you have it.
I was just wondering how, you know, people become aware of openings, and maybe people would be knocking down the door.
Yeah, I think, I don't have any objections. You know, we have our bulletin and our website. We've just changed our website. We've made some big improvements to that. I would hope that we have people that, larger people that are looking at it, I don't know, but as well with our bulletin. I have no, you know, I have no reason to or not to. I can, we can make sure that we put those on, and that's fine. I thought Mr. Bieber was sincere when I'd met him originally. And so in this case specifically with him, that's all I guess I can tell you. So, any other? Yes?
Yeah, no, I have no qualms with it. I just, I know we post, like, job openings and stuff like that, so I just didn't know how people became aware of those.
Sure. I think sometimes, you know, maybe, you know, we can do a little bit job, better job when we put them on the bulletin or put them on the city website. We can make an announcement in public as well. I don't know how many people tune in. I think it depends on the item or the issue. Sometimes we get a lot, sometimes we get ten. So yeah, we will do that. But, and the regards to the motion on the floor, is there any other questions or comments? All right. Thank you. We have then the motion on the floor to consent to the appointment of Mr. William J. Bieber to the City of Belvidere Planning and Zoning Commission for the remainder of the term of office expiring April thirtieth, 2026, as presented. If there are no other questions or comments, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And if there's any opposed? Okay. Motion passed. Thank you. And under Public Works Unfinished Business, we have none. Public Works, item four on the agenda. Public Works New Business, we have item A, which is well number nine, air handling unit. And Director Anderson, you may want to help us here?
Thank you, Your Honor. Memo in your packets, we've received the filing proposals to furnish and install an air handling unit at well number nine to replace the portable units that we've been using in order to increase reliability and performance. Seroni Piping Company, five thousand eight hundred and five dollars. Helm Service, nine thousand seven hundred and ninety-four dollars. Both firms have successfully completed projects for us in the past and are both familiar with well number nine. I would recommend approval of the proposal from Seroni Piping in the amount of five thousand eight hundred and five dollars to furnish and install a Goodman air handling unit at well number nine. This work will be paid for from line item sixty-one, five, eight, ten, sixty, forty.
Okay. Thank you. And could I have a motion by Alderman Snow? And can we get a second, please? Second by Alderman Albertini, thank you. Any questions regarding the motion on the floor? All right. Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
And if there's any opposed? Okay. Motion passed. Thank you. And we have item B, which is Business Twenty, Geno Road, and E Six Street Signal Upgrade, which is video detection. And there's a memo in your packet dated eleven eight of twenty-three from Director Anderson regarding this. Director Anderson?
Thank you, Your Honor. As stated in the memo, our existing loops at that intersection need to be repaired. And in lieu of replacing those loops, we're recommending that we go with a camera system. We've received two proposals for that camera system. William Charles Electric, twenty-nine thousand five hundred and sixty-two dollars and fifty cents. Helm Electric is twenty-nine thousand seven hundred and forty-seven dollars. The maintenance of this intersection is shared with IDOT. IDOT is responsible for two-thirds and the city one-third. I would recommend approval of the proposal from William Charles Electric for the installation of video detection at the intersection of Business Route Twenty and E Six Street in the amount of twenty-nine thousand five hundred and sixty-two dollars and fifty cents. The city's share of the cost, nine thousand seven hundred and fifty-six dollars, will be paid for from public benefit fund line item forty-one, five, one, ten, seventy-nine hundred. And IDOT is in agreement with the recommendation.
Okay. If I could get a motion of that effect, please? Motion by Alderman McGee, second by Alderwoman Frank, thank you. And any questions? We'll go with Alderman Flurry first.
Thank you. What exactly is video detection?
So it's a camera system that's mounted up above, so it eliminates the detector loops altogether and uses video detection. It's a continuous reel, so it doesn't record anything. There's no recorded dated. It just takes live-action data, so it knows when cars are there. It's much more beneficial, like when you're motorcycles and stuff, sometimes they have problems setting off the detector loops that are in the pavement. Video detection just picks up the fact that they're actually there, so.
Thank you.
And this will be paid, we will pay a hundred percent of the bill, and then we'll be reimbursed from IDOT for their portion. That happens on an annual basis. Usually we get the, our annual cost for maintenance on all our cost share for intersections with IDOT. Those are submitted usually June or July-ish, and then usually by the late fall, around this time, we'll get a reimbursement check from IDOT.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Alderman Flurry. Alderman Snow?
So generically speaking, when you have things that are going to be paid out of line items, is this considered a budgeted item, or because it's coming out of the public benefit, which is kind of a catch-all for, oops?
Yes, your description of a catch-all is good. As you know, we don't have a, like I say, savings account, so to speak, in our general fund, like we do in water and sewer. So public benefit kind of acts as that fund for us in this case. So it was a little more than just a maintenance item. You can consider it maintenance, but I think public benefit's a better spot to take it out of.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Alderman Albertini?
Thank you, Mayor. I have one quick question for you, Brent. You said these cameras will only be used to monitor, to turn on the lights, on and off for directional. If in the future, can these cameras be used for anything else?
No.
Okay, thank you.
It's a much more expensive setup to be able to capture it for any further information, and then there's storage requirements, and it gets in a whole big realm of things that we don't necessarily want to get into.
Okay, and if this were to become anything in the future, we'd be notified, these cameras, if they were to be used for anything else?
No, they would not be, they would have, the system would have to be totally replaced in order to do that.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions? All right. We have then the motion on the floor for approval for William Charles for the installation of video detection at the intersection of Business Route Twenty, Geno Road, and E Six Street in the amount of twenty-nine thousand five hundred and sixty-two dollars and fifty cents, which is the low bid on this. And keep in mind, this isn't Big Brother watching, this is in order to activate the signals, which, that's a good thing. So obviously, it is a safety issue. So the video detection is a little bit misleading, but that's the terms we have. And all good questions. If there are no other questions regarding that, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And if there's any opposed? Motion passed. Thank you. And item C, we have on here truck repairs. Director Anderson?
Thank you, Your Honor. Memo in your packet, our street department truck, twenty-seventy-two, it's a nineteen ninety-nine Navistar ten-yard dump truck. It's got eighty-one thousand, a little over eighty-one thousand miles on it, and a little over nineteen thousand hours. The frame rails have a couple of cracks and will no longer pass state inspection. The cost of a new replacement truck is currently about two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars and a two-year wait or longer for delivery. We've received a cost estimate from BOTS Welding and Truck Service in the amount of twenty-three thousand five hundred and fifty-six dollars and eight cents to make the necessary chassis repairs. The truck also needs to have the injectors replaced, which we will do in-house. The cost of the new injectors and related materials is approximately ten thousand dollars. The estimated time to complete the repairs is sixty to ninety days. Therefore, I would recommend approval of the repairs to the street department truck, twenty-twenty-seven, and an estimated total cost of thirty-three thousand five hundred and fifty-six dollars and eight cents. The cost will be paid for from line item zero-one, five, three, ten, sixty, twenty.
All right. Could I get a motion of that effect, please? Motion by Alderman Snow, and a second by Alderman Albertini, thank you. Alderman Snow?
So with these kind of repairs, do we anticipate getting another five years out of the truck, or should we be needing to get on the list of ordering a truck?
The balance of the truck is in, is in good shape for the age, which is why I'm recommending to go this route with it. I would expect we'll get at least five, if hopefully not ten or more. We're fortunate enough with this truck, it's got a, it's got a double frame rail, so they will basically replace one of the two frame rails. So it would be a totally different story if it would just hit a single frame rail, but with the double frame, it allows us to make these repairs.
Okay. Alderwoman Freeman?
Thank you. So Brent, did we purchase this truck in nineteen ninety-nine, brand-new?
It was a state-bid truck we purchased new, yes.
All right. And as you can imagine, I was excited whenever I found out that Brent was only going to request thirty-three thousand dollars to bring us a truck that may last five to ten years, and also, you know, two-hundred-and-fifty thousand versus a two-hundred-and-fifty thousand. And then, with a two-year wait, I would anticipate, I hope, that some of these prices come down before we have to go out and purchase, whether it be on the state bid or we find a used vehicle. But right now, as everybody knows, the cost of everything is at a premium, so I was certainly appreciative that this was a solution. So we have a motion on the floor then to recommend the approvals of the repairs to the street department truck, number twenty-twenty-seven, at an estimated total cost of thirty-three thousand five hundred and fifty-six dollars and eight cents. This cost will be paid for from line item oh-one, dash, five, dash, three, one, zero, dash, six, zero, two, zero. And is there any other questions? Comments? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? Motion passed. Thank you. Thank you, Director Anderson. And item five, other? A is a health renewal for 2024. We have with us here this evening, Tim Knopf of Gallagher. Tim, welcome.
Thank you.
Nice to see you again.
Good to see you as well. Good evening, everyone. So I'll start with the easy stuff first. How's that? Dental insurance. We have two line items of insurance for renewal for January first. Dental insurance, medical insurance. The dental insurance is a self-funded dental plan that we've had in place for a long time. In fact, the last seven years, our rate adjustments have been zero percent every year for the last seven years on dental. And for 2024, it's going to be zero percent again. Okay? So that's really good news with the same plan design, with the same admin fees, with the same network, same providers of dentists, same premiums. So that one's pretty simple in the big picture. So I wanted to kind of get that out there for your guys' consideration this evening, and if you had any questions with regards to the dental program before I go to the second one. We're good. Okay. Second one, medical insurance. So let me just give you a little history, so you can understand that we've been pretty successful for the past few number of years with regards to our renewals, okay? And the last five years, actually, the last six years, we've had a cumulative rate increase of three percent over six years. So that means our average annual rate increase on our medical insurance the last six years has been a half a percent a year. So that's pretty good when trends are seven to nine percent. We're significantly beating that trend. But then unfortunately, I look back in our records, and I think in 2016, we had a bad claims year, and we had a high rate increase, and we negotiated some of that to get it down to somewhat reasonable rate, but we certainly took it with a double-digit increase in 2016, I believe, for the city. So that's seven, eight years ago. Okay? So, but since that time, we've been pretty flat, if you will, over that period. And everything in life has ebbs and flows. And unfortunately, this year, our claims, when we got the report from Blue Cross, we were at a hundred-and-forty percent loss ratio. So what does that mean? Basically, it means if we gave them a million dollars in premium, they paid a million for in claims. So they lost four-hundred thousand dollars. So at some point, when they lose that kind of money per million dollars, and we're spending two million almost, they're going to ask for some of it back. So what they did on the initial is they asked for a sixteen percent adjustment in our premium for 2024. So we went back and negotiated with them multiple times, and we've got them down to, at this point, nine-point-eight percent. And they won't go any lower, but we almost got them cut in half, so we're into a single digit. But as we always do at Gallagher and Williams Manny before that, is we always want to make sure that we're looking at alternative sources, just to make sure that we're providing the best coverage with the best rates for the city and your employees. So we went to market, and we had bids from a couple places that were higher, and one or two declined. And then we had a quote from United Healthcare. And United Healthcare at this point, and I think that's what's in your packet, at this point is at a negative twelve-point-one percent under your current, when we looked at it. So just kind of in summary, you're paying about a million nine in premium right now, and Blue Cross wanted to move it to two-point-one million. And United Healthcare's at a million six-seventy. So that's about four-hundred-and-thirty thousand dollars less in annualized premiums to the city for relatively the same coverage. And I say relatively because it's never exact when you bounce from one carrier to the next. Some co-pays may change, some deductibles may change, some out-of-pockets may change. And so, one of the things that we talked about was to try our best to make sure that we would be able to cover all the differences between the old plan that we had with Blues to the United Healthcare plan, and maybe adjust cost to make sure that we're on an even playing level with what the employees had for benefits for last year. So that four-hundred-and-thirty thousand that I just mentioned in savings would probably be about three-hundred-and-thirty thousand, because, as you know, we self-fund some of the plan designs. So if we have to self-fund some of the co-pays or some of the deductibles, it's probably going to cost another hundred thousand dollars in estimated claims costs to get the plan design to be as similar as possible to the plan design with co-pays and deductibles that you experienced in 2023 for 2024 with United Healthcare. But that's still a significant savings at three-hundred-and-some thousand dollars to be able to make that equal, if you will, from the last year's plan design. So, and then United Healthcare... So, and then, United Healthcare, on top of that, said, "We'll cap next year's rate increase to no more than 11.9%." So if you move to us, you get the negative 12.1 this year, and no worse than 11.9 next year, which would be a negative .2 off of the Blue Cross plan you were playing in 2023. So in essence, over the two-year period, you know, you're now, when I add it up over the next eight years, your cumulative adjustment would be negative 8.9% over eight years, which means eight years through 2025 would be a negative 1.1% a year in health insurance rate increases from 2017 to 2025. That's pretty good, when you look at it in cumulative basis. But, that is the option that's most consistent, and looks like it can save the city money, and then also, or at least keep them competitive, and then also make sure that we try to keep the benefits as close as possible to where they were in 2023. Questions on any of that?
The one thing, Tim, it's my understanding is that the plan that we currently have, Blue Cross Blue Shield, doesn't have that exact plan, correct?
Right.
That's why we, so, the plan that we had offered actually isn't available, they don't have that plan any longer, so that's why we're at this point now in time where we're looking at.
That became the first consternation, right? Because Blue Cross came back and not only adjusted rates because of our loss ratios, but then they said, "You've been in a grandfathered plan prior to Obamacare's implementation in March of 2011." So that's how long we've had this plan design in place, since prior to 2011. And so, they've said, "We are extinguishing all of their grandfathered plans effective 1124 at Blue Cross Blue Shield." Now, do I know exactly why they're doing that? No. I've got a call into the regional sales manager saying, "Was there a statute that I'm not aware of? Was there just a Blue Cross policy? What was it?" And I haven't had that answer, but as soon as I get it, I'll forward it onto the city clerk, the mayor, and the city attorney, so that it can be disseminated to those that need to know about it. But, that question is being asked, because I'd like to know exactly why, and they didn't explain it to me as far as why they were discontinuing that grandfathered plan, but nonetheless, they didn't offer it to us. So with that regard, the plan they were gonna offer us was gonna have differing copays and out-of-pockets nonetheless anyway, that we would have to adjust for under our self-funding to keep the plan design similar to 2023, even with Blue Cross. Much like we're gonna have to do some fangling or whatever with regards to the plan design for United Healthcare. But you've got a negative 12% under your last year's rates compared to a 9.8% over, so that's about a 20% spread between the two premiums between Blue Cross and United Healthcare. And that's pretty significant, hard to overlook, I guess, and, and definitely from our standpoint, from a due diligence standpoint, we wanna make sure that you're aware of all your choices and options.
Okay. I would agree, $330,000 is significant savings, and, you know, the healthcare, the healthcare plan that is before you, I think, saves the taxpayers, saves us money, and yet offers a great plan. But anyhow, any questions that you might have for Tim? First, Alderman Snow, and Alderwoman Grahamkowski.
And maybe this isn't necessarily for Tim, but for the rest of the staff that might be here that's currently on the plan, do they see any, you know, like, "Oh my God, this is gonna impact me huge individually," or they think across the board? Just so we have a feel, not that it's gonna change our decision, but if we had any feedback that might be of interest.
The reality is, yeah, we're gonna feel it, because it's gonna be increasing the cost, for example, medication, although Tim may have found a way to cut that down in the future too, and he's working on that. If you look at the, the spreadsheets in front of you, current plan versus the, the plan in either United or Blue Cross Blue Shield and their most recent proposal, especially in your tier-four drugs, they, that cost goes up fairly significantly. But again, we may have a way around that, and frankly, you know, about two years ago, when I was worried about my own insurance, I found out that GoodRx actually works. And I've been able to buy my medication for my kids cheaper than the copay through Blue Cross Blue Shield. So, not, not trying to plug a company, but there's ways around that. So the reality is, yes, is it gonna be cost more out-of-pocket for an employee? It all depends. On United Healthcare's plan, if they don't go to the doctor much, if they're relatively healthy, it'll be cheaper. If they go to certain types of specialties, it might be a little bit more. You know, so it really depends on the employee and the utilization, but it comes right down to it, Blue Cross Blue Shield and United are fairly close in their benefit package.
Alderwoman Grahamkowski?
Thank you, Mayor. So, when you talk about prescription drug packages, the United Healthcare and Blue Cross options versus what you have currently, how many drugs have they cut off their list, if any?
So they haven't cut off any of the drugs from the list, it's just a matter that there's always this movement of drugs, and more, more often than not, that's a negotiation between the pharmacy benefit manager company that's contracted by the insurance company, and the actual manufacturer, Eli Lilly, Pfizer, Bristol Myers, and what their pricing, their product back to the PBMs are. And they may move a drug from one level to another, and that kind of happens, it happens more in the over-65 area, because people have a prescription drug plan, PDPs, and their drugs fall in, like my mother says, every year they're checking my medicine to make sure that it's in the right tier, and I might have to move from Aetna over to Humana or to wherever, type of thing, because my drug became in this level, but this company had covered it this way, based on what they're buying in volume from a manufacturer. So, that's an ebb and flow, but all the drugs nonetheless are covered, it's just which tiers they fall into, and it's not significant that things like Avalanche to different tiers, it might be, there might be 100 drugs, and three of them happen to move from tier three to tier four, or from tier two to tier three, but it's not significant, but those kinds of movements do happen, but it happens all across the spectrum of insurance, regardless of where you're at in life and what kind of product you're buying.
Okay, so I guess what, just to make sure that someone that's on drug A will still be able to get drug A through United Healthcare, it won't be off the list?
They would, yes, absolutely. It won't be falling off the list. No, the only thing that sometimes happens is, some carriers will change their relationships with pharmacies, so like, and this happens, like, Blue Cross is an example, has different factions, so Blue Cross has Wellmark in South Dakota and Iowa, and they made a decision that CVS was their primary carrier versus Walgreens, whereas Walgreens has a better initiative with Blue Cross in Illinois than CVS. So, different states have different negotiations with different pharmacies. And so that happens there, but nonetheless, those drugs are covered, it just may be, where does it fall, and who's got what relationship with whom? And those relationships are business contracts between manufacturers, insurance companies, pharmacies, and all of those are, we're just kind of like the recipient of whatever falls through the cracks with that stuff, unfortunately. We don't have any say in the matter, per se, we just, but they do cover them. You're welcome.
Thank you. Any other questions from anybody for Mr. Knopf? Alderwoman Frank?
Thank you, Mayor. So, Blue Cross Blue Shield is pretty widely accepted, but do you know how the other one is accepted at the hospitals in this region?
Yeah, so United Healthcare is, is very large too. In fact, when you, look, United Healthcare is actually publicly traded, they're on the stock market, they're a Fortune 500 company, so they're one of the largest 500 companies in America, like a McDonald's, or Coca-Cola, or Home Depot, or things like that. And so, United Healthcare has Mercy, OSF Swedes, is their tier-one hospital networks here, which are all the three major hospitals in the Rockford area, just like Blue Cross does. So, and they're national, they're based out of Minneapolis is where their corporate headquarters are, but they're, Blue Cross has factions, so if you add the factions, Blue Cross and United are probably very similar in size, but from a market valuation standpoint, United Healthcare as one entity is the largest insurance company in the United States of America.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Alderman Albertini?
You're good.
I just have a quick question. I noticed with the mail orders, United Healthcare is quite significantly higher. The people who mail order, like I do?
Yep.
This would be a large increase, if you use them, a lot of people, I'm guessing, use a lot of drugs. Why is that ratio so high?
It is two and a half times.
Yeah.
And typically, it's two times.
Yeah.
It's always been two times for 90 days, so it's two months' prescription for 90 days. Now, the one thing that we talked about in our meeting that isn't on here, that you, that we didn't talk about, so I'm glad you brought it up, is Blue Cross, unfortunately, or fortunately, as of July 1st of 2024, which doesn't really affect this right now, is gonna convert all of their health plans, and all of their group plans, to three copays for 90 days, which would be even higher than the United Healthcare at two and a half. That's gonna happen mid-year. And so they're gonna do that to our plan regardless. So if you're on mail order, you're gonna just pay the same copay for 90 days, delivered to your house, versus what you'd get by going to Walgreens and picking it up. So, they, I don't know why they're doing, I think they feel that the cost of the two comes to a point where it's hit a mean, to where there was no differentiation for them in savings, to be able to pass that savings on to people under a mail order like they've done the last 20 years. And like, the prescription costs are the things that are also eating away at a lot of the, the medical cost. I mean, now it's not inconceivable for pharmacy cost to be 30% of your overall healthcare spend, whereas five to seven years ago, it was 15 to 17% because of cost of specialty meds and things like that, it had come out that, like Humira, if you don't, if you don't have insurance, Humira costs five to 6,000 a month. So it's 60 grand just to have that arthritic medicine without insurance. Pretty expensive.
All right, thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Knopf? All right? Hearing none, thank you, Tim. I appreciate you coming here this evening, and appreciate all your help.
Thank you very much. Appreciate everything for you guys. Thank you, and have a great Thanksgiving.
You too.
But I might be back next Monday.
I understand.
All right, thank you.
Mayor, I apologize, I should've asked this question before we stepped out here. Are we looking for a motion tonight?
I have it. I have a motion here.
Good.
Yep. So with that being said, I have, I would ask for a motion to approve United Healthcare CFMM Nexus RX EUX Medical Plan and Self-Fund Dental for the City of Belvidere Employees for year 2024. If I could get a motion of that effect, please? Motion by Alderman Snow, second by Alderman McGee, thank you. Any discussion, any comments, any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
And if there's any opposed? Okay, thank you. Thank you again, Tim, appreciate you coming this evening.
Yeah, thanks, everyone.
All right, item B, in your packet, you have from Ms. Hanson, contract for cleaning services. I guess, Ms. Hanson, I will defer to you on this, I've read it, and it is what it is, but your comments, please?
Thank you. The current contract for cleaning services at City Hall expires December 31st. Morgan Building Maintenance has very satisfactorily provided these services for the past few years, and we'd like to continue this relationship. Therefore, it is recommended the city enter into the attached contract for calendar year 2024. Current rates are $1,054 per month, and the proposed 24 rate is $1,132.63, which takes into consideration the increase in the minimum wage and the Paid Leave for All Workers Act. As we are mindful of costs, we suggest moving from three cleanings per week currently to two, which would reduce the calendar year monthly rate to $1,057. I recommend a motion to enter into a one-year contract with Morgan Building Maintenance for Cleaning Services at City Hall at a rate of $1,057 per month. Fees shall be paid from line item 0151106010, repairs and maintenance buildings.
Okay, thank you. Could I have a motion of that effect, please? Motion by Alderwoman Frank, second by Alderman Albertini, thank you. Alderwoman Freeman?
Thank you again, Mayor. So, when I did the math on this, and correct me if I'm wrong, please, I'm not a financier, but, so, at, for 12 months, it seems to me that it's $94.39 for each cleaning, at 12 cleanings a month, so that would be three a week. If we reduce it down to eight cleanings a month at two a week, it ends up being $132 for each cleaning. So we're paying an extra $38 per cleaning. So, you know, my thing is, if we were gonna do the 94.39 for each cleaning, and we were only gonna do eight, we would only be paying $755. But they're charging us $132 to reduce the number of cleanings, at a savings of only $75 for the year.
So, there, I don't have a calculator with me to go over anything you said.
Shannon, too, he did mention that it is gonna take them a little longer, those two times when they come, because they're not coming the third time, so we have to take that into consideration.
Okay, but with the winter coming, and the snow, and the, the salt, and this stuff, is two times a week gonna be enough to keep up with that out in the front lobby?
It has in the past. We went to three times a week, you guys weren't here when COVID happened, so we wanted to clean the building more, so that's why we increased it to three, but I think we're comfortable going back to the two, but...
Okay.
I think those are all, that's, those are good questions, good points. I will say, I remember when Mayor Burton was in office, and I remember we were cleaning this office under his administration, I think it was 2008, perhaps 2007, I don't know, there was a few years, couple years, that actually, the city staff was, was doing that at, whenever we had a crunch, and I think we had some layoffs with employees and, and what have you, but I know that we were doing it ourself, so I know we weren't doing it, I know that wasn't being done three times a week. I think with the COVID, that, that may have been the reason for that, but I think we can live within this by, for sure, you know, I think we can, and I think it would be the right thing to do, as the city attorney, city clerk says, you know, if they're not here as often, then obviously, there's more to do, what that consists of. I, I do know Morgan Maintenance has been our provider for a number of years, and, you know, we'll see how, we'll see how it goes. That's it. Is there any other discussions or questions regarding the motion on the floor? Alderman Snow?
Just out of curiosity, is there, what are the terms, if you're not happy with them, everybody gives a 30-day notice, or what the parameter?
Well, if I'm not happy with them, I think I would call them and find out, and, you know, why I'm not happy with them, and if it comes to an impasse, then we'll have to either be happy with them, or, you know, whatever the terms of the contract, I'm not sure. If they're not getting, if they're not providing service that we think they are, then I guess we'll bring it up at that point, but I don't know if it's... Ms. Hanson, I'm sorry.
There is a 30-day notice provision in there.
Thank you. So if we can't rectify it within 30 days, then we can cancel our relationship? All right, we have the motion on the floor. Is there any other questions? And I will read the motion again. Motion to enter into a one-year contract with Morgan Building Maintenance for Cleaning Services at City Hall at a rate of $1,057 per month. Fees shall be paid from line item 01-5-110-6010, repairs and maintenance buildings. If there are no other questions, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? Okay, motion passed, thank you. And item C, item C, you have a memo in your packet from Attorney Drella regarding the Illinois Paid Leave Act for all, and I guess I would defer to him at this time, and he'd be more than happy to talk about it, I know.
Not about more than happy. Sorry for the lengthy memo, it's a little bit longer than most of mine are. Unfortunately, it's a number, another case of the state passing on an unfunded mandate, but this time not just to local governments, but to the, every employer in the state of Illinois, subject to this act. And essentially, what the state said is that every employer must offer at least one week's paid leave, I should say, not say one week, 40 hours of paid leave, to all employees, whether full-time, part-time, seasonal, temporary, what have you. There are some exemptions for temporary employees, there are a few exceptions for seasonal employees, if you're working for a... if you're working for a park district or a recreation department, because they, of course, hire a lot of summer help and they're not subject to the act. But overall, it applies to every employer in the state of Illinois, including municipalities. In my memo, I mentioned there were some legislative efforts to try and have it amended to exempt out municipalities and townships and other units of local government. In fact, there were a couple of bills sponsored during the veto session that would have exempted municipalities, but only if they had a parks and recreation department. How they would know that, I don't know. I heard from the attorney Rumor Mill this morning that all those efforts are now dead and the act will go into effect January 1, as written. So where does that leave the city? As I said, it requires us to provide paid leave to all employees. The actual impact on the city of this statute is not really great. If we were to implement it, I say if, because of the, at the end of the memo, you probably caught on it, there's a way possibly around it, but the cost of rotation is not great because we only have three part-time employees employed by the City of Belvidere right now. And they're the only ones that would not be currently receiving paid vacation time. It would affect new hires, because in some cases, new hires don't get vacation for the first year. But the reality is, on the non-union side, we've been having to negotiate, giving them some paid time off anyway in order to get people to come and work here, because it's become the industry standard. So it doesn't really affect us greatly there. On the collective bargaining side, on our bargaining units, for example, some of our, both police and fire, really don't get, depending on when it accrues, it's different between the bargaining units, they usually don't get to take the time pretty much for the first year, other than, than holiday time as that passes. Collective bargaining agreements, the act does not affect those until the expiration of the agreement. So we'll be dealing with that several years, a couple of years down the road. And on that side, again, after they get past that first year, our leave benefits are actually greater than the act's anyway. So from an economic standpoint, there's not a huge actual impact to the City of Belvidere. But again, it does impact, one, the three part-timers that we currently have, and we ever hire more, and two, new hires. The other place it impacts city operations is, under the act, those 40 hours are almost like comp time, we can't deny it unless there's a really good reason. An earthquake, tornado, what have you, where it's all hands on deck. Otherwise, if they ask for the time, we pretty much have to let them have it, we can't require them to reschedule necessarily. And also provides that they don't have to give you any notice, although it's encouraged they give you seven days' notice. So they call up that morning, say, "I'm taking time." You really can't say no, it creates operational problems for the departments, and that's more of an operational issue than an economic issue. So, one of the things the act does not do is it does not preempt home rule authority. I don't know if that was an oversight by the legislature, or they didn't think they had the votes to get passed that way or what have you, but it does not preempt home rule authority. It also contains a couple of loopholes in it that say, if you have an ordinance in effect prior to January 1, 2024, that sets sick leave policies, then those policies trump the act. And that was actually a tip of the hat to Chicago, because Chicago has its own home rule sick leave law that applies to all employers in the city of Chicago, but it actually helps out us. So the council really has four choices and we have to do one of them, and it really comes down to two choices in the ultimate. We have to do one of them prior to January 1. The first one would be to simply comply with the act. And I have modified our personnel manual to be able to do that, if that's the route that the city council wants to go. In my memo, I identified steps, you know, two and three, and step four, there actually was a combination of two and three. Two was to utilize our home rule power and to say, "It doesn't apply to us. Our own vacation is our own affairs. You didn't preempt it, so therefore we can regulate, we're going to do that and not file the law." Step three would be to adopt and use that loophole that actually existed in the law, so it's kind of like a bootstrap scenario. If one doesn't work, the other won't work, and say, "We have our own sick leave policies already, we're going to adopt them by ordinance, and that's our ordinance, and therefore we comply with the act." Surprisingly, I've been following what the IML has been doing, and while the data's, their memo's earlier than my memo, it actually came out later, they went out and they polled all the other really smart lawyers in the state of Illinois, the Department of Law, and they came up with all kinds of ordinances that we can steal from, and their final advice and their memo to the IML was exactly the same thing that, that my two and three would be, which would be the bootstrap approach, adopt an ordinance under home rules, say, "Number one, we're not bound by this act because you didn't preempt us, but number two, we're going to codify our existing sick leave policies as an ordinance." So it's up to the city council, which it wishes to do, I'll try to take questions, and then when we think you have a direction where you want to go, I have recommended a motion for you.
Alderwoman Freeman?
Thank you again. So when I read your memo, it, I was under the impression that you, um... You didn't know if this was going to actually add more vacation time to employees, or if they're, what they get now will satisfy this act?
My legal opinion is that should satisfy as required by the act. In other words, if an employee already gets 40 hours of sick leave, I'm sorry, paid time off, called vacation time, that would satisfy it. What wouldn't is that, how they schedule and use it, because most of our policies now say, you schedule it, you know, you got to ask for it ahead of time, and it's not approved or not approved, they can really call on that day and ask for it. So that part would be an issue, but as far as the actual time off, yes, I do not believe it adds on to existing days. So for example, a non-union employee with 15 years of service that's in a group B employee, so basically a department head, gets up to four weeks of vacation. It would not turn into five weeks. That is the opinion of every municipal attorney I've talked to and read about. However, as I put it in the memo, again, by the attorney Rumor Mill, there are some collective bargaining units in other municipalities that are already saying, "Nope, you owe us another week." And those are contracts that are currently in negotiation. I don't think they'll be successful, but they're trying to do that.
My other, my other question is, how many hours per week do our part-time employees work? And I ask that because when I was 28 and I found myself divorced with children, I wanted, I went, I was going to Rock Valley, but I also needed a job and I had no work experience, so I took a part-time job so that I could still be with my kids and have time for school, while my part-time job worked me 38 hours a week. And the reason they called me part-time was because they didn't have to pay me vacation, holiday, or any type of benefits.
The, the actual hours varies by department, actually varies sometimes by the season. For example, the building department has one part-time inspector, his regular schedule is two days a week, eight hours a day of those two days a week, but there's weeks where he works five days and weeks where he doesn't work any days, depending on the department director's vacation schedule, things like that. Another part-time employee works mornings only, really like eight to noon or nine to noon, but he's also a farmer, so there's weeks where he's not in at all, and there's other weeks where he puts in a few extra hours, but they stay below that, that part-time threshold, and the only other part-time employee is, is the fire department, department secretary, and I think she's working, is it 34 or 32?
32.
32 hours per week.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Alderwoman Frank?
Thank you, Mayor. When you can come in like two hours late or leave two hours early, who's going to keep track of those hours?
We all have, it's actually through ADP app that we have to keep track of our time. For example, mine, because I'm a salary employee, that's, if I'll say exempt, it's just set for eight hours a day and what have you, but employees will have to keep track of the hours, they log in and they log out through their app, and it's kept track of by the department head or their supervisor.
Okay, so will they call in and say they're coming in two hours late, or they...
Yeah, they do have to notify them, yes.
Okay.
It's not, they just, don't just show up, no. They do have to notify them. I mean, and quite frankly, from that perspective, especially on the police and fire side, some of them have comp time that we require them to notify us, but they could call, and they're usually very good about doing that, because they don't want to leave their brothers and sisters shorthanded. But, you know, we're kind of stuck in that, legally, that realm anyway. Any other questions?
Alderman Snow?
Well, at this point, I'll make a motion that we adopt number four, which is a combination of two and three.
So that's kind of where I was thinking I was going to make the recommendation. What I'll do then is if this passes, it will come back before you in an ordinance form next Monday night. That would be a utilization of home rule power exempt us through, from the act in one section, and then another section codifying our existing sick leave policies as an ordinance that will reflect the possibility of a change to the collective bargaining process, because you never know what's going to happen with that, although it hasn't changed in my recent history. And for whatever reason, I'll probably have another clause in there that says that everybody gets at least one day off. For some reason, I saw that in one of the IML recommendations, I'll come back to you with why that is when it comes out in the ordinance.
Okay. All right, we have a motion on the second, a motion and a second, that being to adopt an ordinance which combines two and three, from the city attorney's memo, as he had stated, utilizing of home rule, and also the Chicago clause in the act in three, basically approve essential opting out of the act, but also adopting our own ordinance in a, in case a court rules home rule of authority does not apply. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, second agree? Second agree?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, if there's no other discussion, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion on the floor, please say aye.
Aye.
And if there's any opposed? Okay, motion passed, thank you. And we have item D, which is in your packet, memo regarding the appointment of Wendy Frank to the Board of Library Trustees of the City of Belvidere. And I will read it, this is dated November 9th, appointment of Wendy Frank to the Board of Library Trustees of the City of Belvidere from me, stating I offer my appointment for the council's consideration and approval of Wendy Frank to the Board of Library Trustees of the City of Belvidere. The appointment is to fill a vacant, a current vacancy on the board created by the resignation of Ms. Dawn Brooks, which term will expire on July 1 of 2024. I thank Ms. Brooks for her dedicated service to the library board and the City of Belvidere. With that, I would ask for the recommended motion, motion consenting to the appointment of Wendy Frank to the Board of Library Trustees of the City of Belvidere with, with to fill the remaining term created by the resignation of Dawn Brooks, with a term expiring on July 1 of 2024. If I could have a motion to that effect, please? Motion by Alderman McGee, and a second. Second by Alderwoman Gramkowski, okay, thank you. And any questions, any comments, any discussion? Alderwoman Freeman?
Thank you, again, Mayor. So I think we're losing a, a really good person here, I'm really sorry to see Dawn leave. My main concern is to make sure that the library is inclusive to all members of our community. I have a little bit of a reservation on this because of that, but I'm hoping that nothing changes much down there.
Okay. Any other comments, Alderman Snow?
So I, again, have apprehensions as well. I wasn't impressed that Ms. Freeman was down at the, sorry, Ms. Frank was down at the protest back when, a couple of months ago, when they were having an issue that some community people weren't fond of. Also with, again, the, my understanding was the trustees and the director weren't even aware that Ms. Frank was being recommended by the mayor's office, so just voicing that concern.
Okay. Any other questions, any other comments? May I, I might add that I think we'd done this prior with Mr. Pierce, when I'd appointed him to the library board. I don't know for sure what the apprehension is regarding what you may not like about my appointment that I made, but I will say this, I do make appointments to other boards. For instance, when we had the joint city-county coordinating committee, those were obviously an appointment that involved a council member. I always thought as well that, that was a good conduit from the county to the city, as well, as you're fully aware, I make the appointment to the Keene Age Center Board. That appointment I've made with an alderperson. Again, I think it's important that we have a conduit from the city to the Keene Age Center, and in this case, I've made the appointment, I've offered the appointment to Alderwoman Frank, who, I think it is important, I think anytime we can have a council member be involved in any of those appointments, I think that's a, a good thing, it's a good thing for me. It certainly provides a conduit that I may not otherwise have. And so, again, you have a motion on the floor in front of you. If there's any other discussion, any comments? Feel free. Okay. Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? Okay, motion passed, thank you. And then also, on your packet this evening, there was a little bit of a mix-up, probably, I'll certainly take credit for that one, but you did not have in your packet a resume from Mr. Rathburn, so I did lay it on your desk here this evening. This certainly isn't the last vote, this will come back up at the council level for proven, for appro, for approval, or not. And so, one of the things that I was, always bothered me was that whenever appointments were made to the Fire and Police Commission, which I consider to be very important, it's a very important position, but I didn't, at one point, when I was an alderman, under my predecessor, I'd ask for, obviously, with good reasons, resumes. I think this position is very important, and I think you need to have, know who you're voting on. So I have provided Mr. Rathburn's resume that you have, you certainly can look at it, his phone number is on there, if you choose to call him, feel free. I think he's a very credible individual, he has had a background check, but as you can see, that he had had a career in the Navy, the Great Lakes Naval, Great Lakes Naval Station, you can see some of his expertise regarding that, and I thought he was an excellent candidate. So with that being said, if I could have a motion regarding the appointment of Timothy Rathburn to the City of Belvidere Fire and Police Commission? Motion by Alderman Snow, second by Alderman Flurry, thank you. And any questions or comments? As I said, you will have a, you will have this come up before you at the council meeting, and, but I'll try and answer any questions that you may have, Alderman Snow?
This doesn't have anything to do with this specific appointment, but somebody was asking me when we were talking about this kind of stuff, and the question was, "Are these paid positions?" And I informed them, to the best of my knowledge, the only paid ones that we would appoint happened to be on the planning and zoning, and that was because of attendance issues.
They are paid, they are paid for meetings on the Fire and Police Commission. What that is now, is it $40 a meeting? Can anybody help me out here?
It, it depends what office you hold.
It depends what office you hold. So if you're the secretary, president, or just the, one of the chairs, it depends. So one position's 40, one position is 50, one position is 60, and they vote amongst themselves to who's going to hold those positions.
Thank you, city clerk. I appreciate you bailing me out on that one. I knew 40 was in there somewhere, but anyhow, any other questions?
To that note, could we get a list or a printout of which committees, who, just for knowledge, we don't need to know who's getting what at this moment, just the position and which group. Because like, we appoint the, a person for the community building, which I do have a question in some of those positions. Is there actual residency requirements for some of those? Because I believe we appoint Don Banks, and I know he doesn't live in the city limits, and I'm not questioning that. It's just the logistics of it. I didn't know what the parameters are, and if we could get any information on that.
Sure. I'll provide you with the information. It's my understanding Mr. Banks had served at that time, and he was a reappointment. But I will make sure that we have that accurate. I don't believe, in this case, yes, they have to have residency within the city of Belvidere.
Fire and Police Commission.
Fire and Police Commission. And, and Mr. Rathburn does, so specifically to this one. But I will get, we will get you the other information. I understand, absolutely. Any other? Alderwoman Freeman, and then Alderman Albertini?
Thank you, Mayor. So we seem to be appointing people to the Police and Fire Commission quite frequently. How many people are on that?
Oh, there's three. And you may recall that I had a, Mr. Ed Gonzalez, who had served for, I think, 23 years. He was on the Police and Fire Commission over a period of one, two, three, and me, four? No, three. Mayor Burton, Mayor Chamberlain, and myself over that period of time, 23 years. He, he resigned, and of course, I made that appointment as well. In this case, the appointment of, the appointment of the individual that is now serving there was actually, should have been a reappointment in 2021 before I took office. His term was up on April 30 of 2021. That appointment was never made by the outgoing mayor. And to be honest with you, I really didn't realize that that appointment was that long. I think that individual had been in there 10 years. And so, we do have, it seems like, appointments on different things that are coming up, but that's just the way, that's just the way it falls. There's, that's just the way it is. Uh huh. Any other questions? I'm sorry, Alderman Albertini?
Thank you, Mayor.
You got to throw something at me once in a while.
I would give you a bump. I, I don't have a question, I actually have a statement. This gentleman lives on my block. I have spoken with him in the past. He's very well-educated, and he's very well-spoken. I've had conversations with him. He seems like a very nice gentleman. But he does seem very direct. I mean, he doesn't beat around the bush. He has his statements to make, and he makes them. But he, to me, I feel he'd be a good fit.
I appreciate that. Thank you. I wasn't aware that anybody here knew Mr. Rathburn, but I would agree with you. I think he is direct, and I admire that. And I think he'll do a fine job. So thank you. Any other questions or comments regarding the appointment? All right, Neil forgive me, you'll forgive the air. His name is Rathburn on our packets. It's not Ratburn, it's Rathburn. So all those in favor of the appointment of Timothy Rathburn to the city of Belvidere Fire and Police Commission, please say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? Okay, motion passed, thank you. And then we have, we have item F, under other, which is the Fire Department. They have Dairy Queen donation in your packet. There's a memo from Chief Shadle, and I know that the chief would love to talk about this, so Chief Shadle?
Thank you, Your Honor. On October 24th, we partnered with Dairy Queen inside from 3:00 to 7:00 that night. We had a table in there, and we were handing out information, public safety information, and interacting with the community. Neil Patel, the owner, also said during that time, he would donate 30% of the sales during that time. That amount came to just over $800, and he said he was going to round it up to $1,000. So I am requesting a motion to accept the $1,000 donation for purchasing public safety material.
Motion by Alderman Albertini, second by Alderman Flurry, thank you. Yeah, Neil Patel is really a great business person for the community, great to work with, and he has done a lot in the community. And I think this is a good indication of how much he enjoys being in this community and how much he enjoys being in business in Belvidere. So, chief, if you see Neil before I do, thank him. And we have that motion on the floor. Is there any other comments, questions regarding the motion? Okay. Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
And if there's anybody opposed? Okay, motion passed. And that is all we have on the agenda this evening. So I would entertain a motion to adjourn, motion by Alderman Albertini, thank you, and a second by Alderman Snow. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And all those opposed? Okay, motion passed. For the record, we adjourned at 7:16 PM. Thank you, everybody, for your time, and thank you again for your contributions last week and this weekend.